Thank you.
All right, guys, sorry about that. We were trying to get our sound right. Again, I'd like to welcome y'all to the October 8 Chilton County Commission Meeting. Has everyone, do we have any, first of all, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? And if so, could I get a motion to approve the agenda as is?
I'll make that motion. We approve the agenda.
Motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of the September 24th meeting? And if so, could I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes for September the 24th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Have you had an opportunity to review the claims? And if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills of October the 8th?
I make a motion, we pay the bills for October 8, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, we come to the public comments section. Robert Johnson, if you would come up to the podium, please, sir. Crowded house, but that's a good thing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me to appear this evening. What I think is a critical issue going on in the county, it's been going on for some time. If any of you happen to own tractor trailers or know somebody who does, I want to apologize in advance about what I'm gonna say. As you've have surely seen tractor trailers on the road, you have the trailer following along behind the tractor. When that tractor makes a turn, that trailer no longer follows along, but will cut across, pointed toward the front of the cab. That causes the trailer to come over that road some. You've probably seen it, they make right-hand turns on streets. You might see the back of the trailer go over the curve. That's because the back of the trailer is not following the back of the cab, it's following the front of the cab. So what happens is, there's a little cut there. Now, if a vehicle is coming in the other direction, the liability here is when that truck makes its turn, the back of that trailer's headed for the vehicle. A week ago last Sunday, I was almost killed. There was a tractor trailer coming down my road that I live on. It's a small road, like a lot of residential roads are out in the county. I saw the back of the trailer crossing over toward me. I blew my horn. Trucker did not stop. He continued to proceed around that curve. As he did, the back of that trailer got closer and closer to me. At a point where maybe you've been in this situation, you have a second, part of a second to make a decision. I knew that that back of that trailer was coming up on my vehicle. I believed that if it had, I would've been killed. Or certainly severely injured. I had to make a split-second decision. When I did, I drove off the road, and the back of the trailer missed me. Fortunately, probably wouldn't be standing here tonight. It's sad, I think, I don't know if y'all have noticed this, but some of you are, well, almost as chronologically blessed as I am. Back in the day, trucker used to be your friend. He'd let you get in front of him, he'd blink at you when it was safe. Not so much anymore. We've all seen it on the highways, on the interstates. This driver didn't even stop. I'm still blowing my horn. By this time, I'm off the road. I did something that I tell people never to do, and I knew I shouldn't have done it, but in the passion of the moment, couldn't help myself. I turned around and followed. And when he stopped, we had a discussion. First of all, he told me that I was speeding on the road. I said, "Sir, I never speed on this road. This is a small road. I know some other people that..." Then it was, "Well, I'm 75 feet long." I said, "Sir, I don't care if you're 175 feet long. You don't have a right to kill me. You need to swing out to the edge of that road as far as you can, so that you're not blocking the lane coming the other way." "Well, I don't want to hit the tree branches." I said, "Well, so it's okay that you don't hit the tree branches, but how does that compare to me being killed by what you're doing?" Well, it just kinda went on like that, and, you know, we calmed down, and I left. And I feel like the only way to address it is through the commission. It is out in the county. This may be an issue on other roads, I don't know. But I know on our road, we have an almost 90-degree turn, which almost any tractor-trailer is not gonna be able to clear. I feel like it's a very dangerous situation. I feel like eventually, somebody's gonna get hurt. And the last thing we need is Alexander Shinara down in Chilton County trying to go after some trucker that's trying to earn his living, or his insurance company, either one. Therefore, I am asking tonight that that road not allow tractor-trailers on it. If you feel like that's impossible, then at the least widen that curve.
What road are we talking about, Mr.?
181.
181.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And what road does that join with? That the road?
It hits 51.
51.
Yes, sir.
I used to live on that.
It's a dead-end road. There's not another way to get in that would be straighter. You've got to come around that curve.
So this guy apparently lives on this road?
Well, I think I've seen him on the road before. I don't think he was making a delivery. He was empty. So I think he was just probably coming home. He wasn't speeding or anything. But the back of that trailer coming across there...
I mean, if it's a dead-end road, obviously he wouldn't make a delivery down there unless he should build a house or something. If he was empty, he wouldn't make a delivery, but...
Right, right.
So he probably lives on that road. How many houses do you think's on that road?
Well, on 181 itself, there are about, I don't know, 10, 12 houses. It's not a very long road, it's only about a mile. But there's two offshoots from that. And one of them is right when you come out of that curve, and the other one is a little further down, and that's where he turns off.
Yeah, he lives on that dirt road down there?
That's what I'm thinking. I don't know, I didn't ask him that. I didn't want to escalate it any further than, you know, "Why are you doing this?", but I didn't want to get any personal.
So you're talking about the curve at the bottom, the sweeping curve past the subdivision, where the first road, the first dirt road comes out?
Yes.
That's the curve you're talking about?
Yes. You're familiar with it?
I used to live on that road.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, it's not a, I mean, I don't think it's a very sharp curve myself, but there are some limbs there, I agree. So if we could cut those limbs back, we'd probably eliminate all this. Then he would at least have room to get over and not hit the limbs, and then that would solve most of the issue, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Widening that road's a challenge. It's, there's pretty good ditches on either side of it.
Oh, yeah.
So it would take a good bit of dirt work to do that, so...
Yeah, I could've been in one. Fortunately, I was, I happened to go off on a little bit of levels.
Right.
Mr. Johnson, we can certainly get Tony to check that road and see if there's something he can do with trimming those trees back. That's the easiest and first solution. The road widening, we're working on that, but we've got a plan, and that's a multi-year issue when you've got...
I understand.
Almost 600 miles of road, and almost all of it is too narrow, and we, for the first time in the history of this county, really had any money to go toward fixing and repairing these roads.
Sure, sure.
We have adopted a first phase of this road repair, or resurfacing, and those roads are gonna be widened. But it, that, just to be honest and forthright with you, it's gonna be a while, because most of these roads are based on traffic counts.
Sure.
And then general location, because we're trying to spread out and do a little bit for various areas of the county, rather than...
Certainly.
You know, the highest population areas that all have a consolidated traffic count on every road they have.
Certainly.
So we're gonna try to do a little bit in every community, and be driven by traffic counts primarily. But we are working toward widening our county roads. But the problem you have, we have on most of our roads. I don't know what we can do to help you with the widening. And if a guy lives on the road, we certainly can't close it, because it would be closed to through-traffic, not for people who live on the road. So that would be another issue that we might run into with that.
Yeah, well, there is no through-traffic there, but, okay.
And I think another option is, I don't know who this individual we're talking about, probably couldn't tell you who he was, or I probably couldn't tell you if I knew the truck, because I am a truck owner, that I would probably go as far as talking with his company and ask him to please be more considerate when we're in these small neighborhoods, and be more aware for oncoming traffic if it's having such a hard time, because like you said, he can swing wide to make that turn. And if he's 75-foot long, maybe he don't need to be on that road, to be honest with you. Because if he's 75-foot long, that's pretty long.
It's pretty long when that trailer comes around.
Yes, sir. And the thing about it is, it's like Mr. Chairman said, that there's a lot and lot you can do when somebody lives on that road, that, but I would probably want to talk with his company, and, you know, maybe talk with him again and see if he could be more considerate about it.
Yeah.
Because tonight, we couldn't do it anyhow without having a public hearing and several procedures of doing, of making a road not traveling.
Well, the first thing we'll do, though, is we'll get, we'll see what we can do about trimming that road. You know, he's riding around in a $200,000 rig, if it's new, over the road truck, and I wouldn't want to put it in the limbs either, but I would stop and clear the ride away for you, and then go around the curve. But we'll do our part to try to make that road more passable.
I appreciate any consideration, because I understand about the finances, I understand about the roads, even though we have that big gas tax money now, right? I understand all of that. All I'm asking, if anything can be done, anything, it's just, it's extremely dangerous. A couple years ago, I was coming around that same curve, and there were two ATVs approaching me. One was in my lane. And if I hadn't slammed on my brakes, that person would be dead.
Right.
Because he was on my side of the road.
Well, we will, Tony's here, and he's made notes, and he'll get his guys out to check and see what we can do to trim.
Okay.
And if we have any other issues, we may want to ask the sheriff to put some additional patrols on the road to make sure people are staying on their side.
Yeah, that's hard for them to sit out there all day waiting for him to come.
They're in the same situation we are, no doubt. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Sir, do you live on 181?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I was coming from my home out to 51 when I encountered this truck coming in. Anybody else, any question? If y'all have any further questions, I'll be happy to try to address them. I'm in the book.
Okay.
So, pretty easy, fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
We have one more person on public comments. Is Ms. Veronica here? How are you tonight?
Hi, good. This is about County Road 209.
Right.
I bought my house 18 years ago. At that time, I was told the road was gonna be paved within the next five years.
Right.
Never been paved. The upkeep of that road has gone downhill. It's been scraped one time this year. They came, now I submitted the paper yesterday, they were out there today. They added some dirt in certain places. I've got pictures. It still is not right. I talked to the man that was scraping it, and he said his job, he can't even do his job proper, because the ditches aren't cleaned out, the sides aren't cut. None of that's done. When it rains, it floods, it creates craters all through the road. Mail lady can't get to the mailboxes. We have to go out there and dig and fix our own road, and this has been for years.
Right.
The ATVs, the four-wheelers, when it rains, they come down there and they're tearing the road up. Why can't it be paved? We have 10 houses there.
Right. Well, it's a money issue, okay? For a simple county road to be paved, it costs about $100,000 a mile for a simple, just basic. If you get into state requirements, you're talking about as much as $400,000 a mile. If there are culverts, all that goes on top of that $100,000 per mile. So it's been a money issue, and we have about 600 miles of dirt road in the county. There are people who live on all of them, and to tell you that we're gonna be able to pave dirt roads, we've got about 80% of our paved roads that are in disrepair right now. And like I said, we've never had any money before this year, so we've got main thoroughfares like County Road 37, and 51, and 42, and 29, and, you know, the roads that carry the massive amount of traffic, and kids to school, and those things, that we're trying to focus on where they, it has the most safety implications. We're gonna work on these roads.
But they're not even, there's no maintenance on them.
But that's...
The only time anybody comes out to scrape them is if you call and you complain, and complain, and complain.
They work, they work on a rotation. And so, you know, you've got all these roads in the county, but they start on one side and they work around, and that takes about a half a year. And then they start around again and work around.
Can't they bring in more dirt?
So on a normal year, ma'am?
More dirt? I mean, can't they put in more dirt, more rock? We get on the road, we get, they put one load at that end, one load at that end, try to smooth it out a little bit...
Right.
And nothing, the rest of the whole road.
Well, I mean, the...
And I have pictures.
Aggregates $15 to $18 a ton for rock, and that's a function of the lack of money in the county. We do what we can, we treat the places that get so bad that cars and school buses can't pass, all within what we can afford. We do have more money than we've ever had, and our maintenance is gonna get a little bit better.
The upcap, the, I mean, we've got trees hanging over, as soon as bad weather comes, that's it, those ones are gonna be in the road.
Right.
They're gonna fall on somebody's car. We've got trees that are on the side where they've already fallen, where people are doing it, taking it upon their self. I don't think I should be out in the middle of the dirt road digging trenches to divert the water.
No, no, you shouldn't, but I mean, for me to sit here as chairman of this commission and tell you that we can fix that, I would be lying to you, because we're, if I, if I, you know, we're working the best we can with what we have, and we're gonna get better. But if you look at traffic counts, your road is like 181 on our list. I mean, just to be honest with you, I'm gonna be...
But yet, but when it rains, it's a very popular road for anybody that wants to come and play in some slush.
I lived for 15 years on a road that was just last year, so I'm very familiar with what you're talking about. It's a countywide issue, there's no doubt. And the four-wheel drive pickups riding with one tire in the ditch, and the ATVs, all that does is make the issues that we already have with the lack of equipment and the lack of people stretched even further, because we're creating a lot of these issues. You know, in some cases, you would say, "I hate the kids who're doing that", but unfortunately, it's not always kids.
No, oh, no, I'm not saying it's kids. No, definitely not. It's just, I just think with, you know, the ditches, when the guy's gonna tell me today, when he's grating the road, I can't do my job properly, because the ditches haven't been cleaned out.
Right.
And the sides haven't been cut, all year.
Well, you know, we're trying to get the sides cut twice a year. One is a bigger cutting, and one is a light trimming. We try to do it at least twice a year, unless a road becomes impassable with our grading. We're putting rock down when we can, and we bought a, we bought a big aggregate pile from an old sand plant that we've left, and it's the little round pebble rock. We're putting that on roads, and people...
We'd love to have that.
It's helping.
We're getting rocks this big. They're dropping the red dirt with big rocks, so it's not even compacted down, so when you come, that rock kicks back up, hits your car, I don't know how many cars I've damaged.
So how do we clean our ditches out, Tony? And don't that, ain't that the job of the motor grater?
They will pull the ditches.
Yeah, I thought that's what you're supposed to do, pulling the crown of the road, and then that's what that, right? Am I wrong?
Right.
They have not been done.
Right now, with everything as dry and powdery as it is, if we put all of that from the ditches out into the middle of the road...
When it rains, it's gonna be mad.
Well, not only that, it's gonna create a washboard with all that loose dirt running in with no moisture in it. Tony and I had that discussion about two weeks ago.
It's been dry.
So we're limited as what you can do.
I understand, I do understand all that, but I mean, I just think, you know, we want a little bit, you know?
Right, I understand.
We'd like to see, I mean, I've seen them grate the road, like I said, one time this year.
Well, I'll tell you this, I have never one time called or known of anyone that called Tony and asked, "You follow a work order, and they get to you." They'll send somebody out almost within an hour, maybe two, a day at most. They'll evaluate the road, they'll decide if it needs to be moved up on the list. If it's a safety issue, they'll pull a machine out of southwest Chilton County and drive it over there if it's a safety issue. They'll stop their rotation to fix safety issues.
I know they have called, people on the road have called that signed that paper. They have called.
Right.
They've gone off the side during, you know, a bad storm, they're right in a ditch, can't get out.
Well, what I would tell you, though, is if you will engage the road department, they're gonna do the best they can with what they have. A lot of times, when your road is bad, there are other people that can't even get down their road. So they're out here, when, you know, you have a major rain, roads wash out, school buses can't run...
Oh, yeah.
People can't get out to go to the hospital, and so they're getting to you in a priority order outside of that normal rotation. I would love to tell you we had a solution, because all you're hearing is excuses, but the reality is...
That is.
We don't have a solution. I wish we did.
I mean...
If these guys can offer a solution, other than us working with our road department, and that's what we're doing, we've put our necks on the line to get some additional revenue, to get some additional resources for these guys to do a better job. Our first tax money will be due the 22nd of this month. It'll be our first tax money that will go to hell.
Well, hopefully something...
So we're working for it.
Hopefully something can be done.
I promise.
I mean, because we've called the police even with the four-wheelers.
Right.
And they've told us they can't do anything. There's no laws that have anything to do with four-wheelers. They don't have to have a helmet on.
Ain't supposed to be on dirt road.
Pardon me?
Boy, there ain't supposed to be on, on the road.
Oh, I had the county sheriff tell me and my neighbor that there is no laws against...
Wait a minute, I don't think that sheriff there told you that.
I don't know. Mr. Taylor, no, it wasn't you.
Well, that is a sheriff.
That's who's been out there that...
This is a sheriff.
There's no laws against...
Yeah, they are.
There is.
Told us there is no laws that he can't even, he wouldn't waste his time stopping one unless he knew he was gonna win in court.
It might've been a deputy, I don't think it was our sheriff, that's our sheriff right there.
Okay, well, a deputy, who is it? It was the county, it wasn't Jimison Police. It was the county.
Okay.
The process of doing it right now is putting out action patrol on your road, but you need to call and let us know, call communications when they're doing it.
Okay.
You know, we don't know, we can't spend...
Oh, I know that, I understand it.
But if it's on Friday afternoon or something like that, call communications when they're coming through, then we can deal with it and catch up on that.
And you can give me that number?
Okay, John, one...
251.
I don't have a paper.
I was gonna say, make sure that she's not calling 911.
No, I would not call 911.
They need something.
Okay, but other people don't know what communication means, so...
751.
He's a writer, though. But no, we did, we had a police officer, but he was county, and told us there are no laws against ATVs.
That's not true.
That they don't even have to have a helmet. And I couldn't believe it when he said it, but he told me and my neighbor the same thing.
This man will fix you up.
Okay, well, thank you.
He's a good, honest guy, and he will take care of you.
Thank you, and I...
I think we're ready to put out action patrol for it right now, because when it's...
When it's happening. And I really do hope, you know, like, the trees can get cut, I mean, before the weather gets bad, and it falls in the road and stuff.
Okay, we will work on it. Tony's got your notes, the sheriff's got your notes. Both of these guys work extremely hard with what they have.
I will call.
Check that out.
I will call.
I believe you.
We appreciate, we appreciate...
I will call.
We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
I mean, when you've got a problem, that's what we're here for.
Well, that's why I had all my neighbors sign that paper, because they're all tired of it.
Right.
But some people just can't come, you know, it's just impossible.
I understand. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tony, if you will, please, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I need would be to request a resolution to grant the final plat approval for the Blackberry Hill subdivision. It's being developed off County Road 213.
So move.
Second.
Now, we have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you. The second item I would like is to get a resolution to transfer our Camazzo Dozer to Manuka Park.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion?
Is that a permanent move?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Third item I'd like to request, Mr. Chairman, is to purchase off of the state bid list one D3 Dozer that was put into my budget and is there.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any questions or concerns?
It's gonna be a new one?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Last item I have, Mr. Chairman, is to request a resolution for salary adjustments for the road department, maintenance department, and litter.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
That's all the business I have.
Thank you.
Okay, sir.
First of all, I'd like to, uh, request a resolution, uh, for surplus, like, two thousand, two thousand one Ford F-150, and also, uh, two thousand nine Dodge Charger.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, next, we'd like to, uh, request a resolution for Amber Jones to be hired as a full-time corrections officer to jail.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the next one, we'd like to request a resolution to hire Trey Shires as a full-time corrections officer to jail.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I'd like to request a resolution to hire Logan Mayfield as a full-time corrections officer to jail.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And next, I'd like to have a resolution to hire Crystal Frankwee, uh, to be reclassified as a full-time corrections officer to jail.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second.[1563.16]